Yes, it is.
All selectmen present?
Ooh.
Our, uh, town administrator and our superintendent. All present. We need in everybody, because we're gonna get right down to business here. We have the minutes that were sent out, and we need to approve them tonight for the April thirteenth meeting. I'll make a motion to approve the April thirteenth, twenty seventeen minutes, as amended by Bob.
I'll second that.
All in favor? No, any further discussion, I'm sorry, I stand corrected. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Bob, you seconded that?
Yes.
Did I ask what was amended?
The discussion is to the non-public.
On page five. The, what Bob said.
Was it on page five, one of the shorts?
Was it three?
Yeah.
The discussion?
Right here.
Okay, let's see if we're clicking this up.
You didn't have that list written maybe?
No, no.
Well, it was, it was written maybe, but it was verbiage still a bit different, right?
No, it wasn't clear.
Oh, so you just made clear it was a little?
Yeah, I wanted to clarify it.
Yeah.
No, she wasn't CC'd on that.
Uh-uh.
Because we should start sending her also, right?
Well, usually, the change is using punctuation.
Yeah, that's usually what it is, spaces and punctuation in a word.
Anything else, you usually send it to me.
Okay.
I'm sure he is coming.
Yep.
We have our public comment next first, before he comes.
So it was page, it was page three, right?
Page two.
Page two, okay.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the public comment. It started over here on the left. Do you have an answer?
My bad.
Uh, do you want, please state your name and?
I'm Don Larson, Footlock Farms. And the, uh, art's on the common, and it'll be putting up banners and signs, making people aware of it, uh, this coming week. And, uh, we've got quite a few, uh, almost fifty-some exhibitors that'll be there. We'll be running on WMUR TV schedule, and we'll be on the front page of the Concord Monitor on Thursday and Sunday. So we've got a good campaign going, and we hope to have a lot of people, and a week later, hopefully, we'll have great weather.
We all want that, that's for sure, okay, great. Um, come forward.
I'm good right now.
Okay. John?
I'm good.
Okay. Chairman, behind you.
I'm awesome.
Okay, okay.
Hey, um, Deb Tron here, uh, Stark Highway North. Um, just, I'm here kind of, um, so we had our elections as well, and we have one new school board member, and I was re-elected to a fourth term here on the end of the school board.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Um, so we just, um, I am the selectman liaison. And, um, kind of as, um, I, when I was a library trustee, I would come once a month to meeting just to check in, not necessarily because we had business. You know, we typically don't always have business with the town unless something comes up, or it gets to be like town report time of year or whatever. Um, but I'd like to just like, once a month, kind of come in, check in with you guys, um, so that we can make sure that we're building that relationship with, you know, we're all in the same boat, we're all town officials, and we should all try to work together.
Absolutely.
So, um, you know, I figured I would just start off in April and have a little check-in and say hi, and, um, just let you guys know that if there's anything, if you want to come to one of our meetings, you're certainly welcome to.
Okay.
Um, I'll try to come once a month, if I have something that needs to be on your agenda, I'll do it that way, otherwise, I may just come during public comment and come just checking in. So that's just kind of why I'm here.
Are the school board meetings on our agenda that we normally have for the month?
On our, are you talking about the calendar? No, that's just strictly for this building.
Okay.
For?
I, I can forward you what I have, um, we have a few, like, we're usually the first Wednesday of the month.
Mm-hmm.
Um, May is a little different, um, because there was some other stuff that come up, but I'll, I'll forward the list to you.
During your budget period, you do give me, uh, pretty colorful.
Right. Yeah, it's a little crazy.
I get that all week, monthly.
But I'll forward what I have, um, we just talked about it at our last meeting, we had a few changes, we had a few extra meetings with, um, looking at, um, having an architect and doing some work on the school. So I'll just forward that to you, Lean, and you can post it where you want to.
Excellent.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
I could maybe have something come along for me.
Please.
Uh, Brian Pike, um, regarding the school, uh, what's the issue with kindergarten, is it half-day, whole-day? You know yet?
Um, it's half-day.
Half-day?
Yep.
Second thing I'm, that came to mind was, uh, back during the town meeting, the school district meeting, um, the Dumbarton Townside puts a thousand dollars in the budget for the kitchen fund, or equipment fund, whatever you want us to call it, and school puts it as a warrant article. And one of the, I believe it was a school bell newsletter?
Mm-hmm.
It said it was no tax impact because of, you know, because of federal funding or something of that nature, they can't put money in the side. So I guess my question is, what's the warrant article for, is it for the town side to accept the town side money?
Yes.
Okay, so then how, and so is it the town's gotta bill up that account to ten thousand dollars before it stops?
We also put money in it.
Uh, according to the, the school bell, it said that, or publication that you guys didn't put money in it.
Well, basically, what happens?
So I'm confused.
If we buy something, we, we take that money out of our budget, we, we just pay for it that year, so if, say, it's a two thousand dollar refrigerator, we take a thousand dollars out of that account, and then we take a thousand dollars out of our budget.
Okay.
That's typically the way we do it.
So then, is the ten, is the ten thousand dollar one for both school and town, or just the town side?
That account can't get over ten thousand dollars.
Right. So, so then we could have twenty thousand dollars to put it in one year for something.
Available.
Good.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
I was confused.
Yeah, it's a comput, it's, it's weird that we have to even put that article on there, but that's the only way we can accept money from these.
That is for the town side, that's not the way I read it.
It's the only way we can accept the money.
So it's the town funds that you're accepting?
Basically, yeah. What's that?
You guys hold on to the money.
Yeah, and we expend it, but it's, you know, it, it's how we have to accept it.
That's, uh, that's, uh, brought clarity to it, because I didn't even, I thought it was money that you were putting aside for it.
Right, I thought there was a match, both your thousand, my thousand went to the trust.
And I can check, I can check and get back to you guys, but I'm, I'm pretty sure, I'm not sure that we actually deposit funds into that money, I think it's we accept your money and put it in there, and typically, we just match it out of our budget when there's a purchase.
Oh, 'cause I thought, I've seen.
Let me, let me check, I'll get back to you guys on it, and make sure, because it's one of those that it's always just funky.
Yeah, I was just confused, so.
Yeah.
Okay, we're in public comment, Jeff, you want?
I'm all set.
Okay, because you're, uh, in the general next, okay. Okay, I'm closing public comment at this point, and I'm gonna go right to, uh, the highway department, and I know there's some issues, and I'd like to hear them.
Well, I only got two.
Okay.
First is we, we moved our weight restriction on the roads.
I can take trees down now?
Yeah, you can do whatever you have to do. Still responsible if you damage a road though?
I understand.
We'll chase you down.
Okay.
Whatever good that does. Uh, and the other thing is, we, the highway department's, Woody's out.
Yes.
And we've taken over.
Right.
We're in the process of taking over all the drives.
I understand what happened, and the thing is, um, I wanna put for the record.
Yep.
Um, that, uh, any requests that, that, any, a request for assistance from your department?
Yep.
It's gotta come through you.
Yeah, that's all, I just wanted to establish a chain of command.
Right, absolutely.
Does it kinda go in different directions?
And, and the thing is, it's gonna come to you.
Yep.
Through, from Lean.
Okay.
Okay, no one else, and it's not, not to accept phone calls until the supervisor comes back off his leave.
Yeah, we kind of, at this point, we, uh, they had to have a repair done to the truck, so kind of complicated things.
And it took half a day almost.
Yeah, well, whatever.
Yeah.
Well, it was, uh, whatever, it took, had to have a repair done, and it.
Kind of makes it.
Some issues and a backlog, and the only thing is, moving forward, especially this time of year where Pete, we try to schedule things, and I have to, last year, it worked out pretty good, we had a pretty good system. We got a good routine, it wasn't at all worked quite well.
Right.
But it's just, I gotta be in the loop, that's all.
And FYI.
Yep.
Saturdays, when we haul trash to Bo, it's open, it's open Saturday, so he can actually do some overtime.
Yeah, actually, it's open five to five.
Okay.
During the week.
Right.
Monday through Friday.
But.
And eight to twelve on Saturdays. And Saturday's kind of a tough day to get somebody to come in and do that.
No, but if he wanted to.
Yeah.
I'm saying, that's an option.
The other thing is, may, what we try to do is, instead of just going hauling one load with a truck?
Mm-hmm.
Try to do a block of things, like, if the metal, the steel, uh, and the wood, and the trash is gonna go that way, when Pete goes up there, he can do several things at the same time.
Gotcha.
And he can grab one of the dumpsters early and take it in to the place, because it just dump it off, and then when Pete gets there. So there may be, after we get in the routine, there may be some early morning starts or whatever.
Perfect. I, I, I just, I understand the confusion that you had by, who was he listening to, like this?
Well, yeah, and then they, you know, and then I, every morning when we meet, you know, they come in and say, hey, I just, I gotta do the haul, and, you know, he.
It's gotta go, it's, it's simple, it's gotta follow a chain.
Like I said, last year, we had no problem, I, we got a routine.
We're gonna do it again, make it work.
Do you have any idea how long this is gonna go on, or?
Um, initial, from anywhere from three to twelve months. So I'll leave it at that, until we get updates.
Yeah, I kind of heard that.
And those, I, I can't, I don't wanna discuss it now, because there's a privacy issues, but, uh, timeline, I.
It's on our nickels.
Yeah, three to twelve months. No, but the, the, the nature of the injury, you know.
Yeah, but I guess, moving forward with that, is it could become problematic when bad weather gets here.
Oh, absolutely.
If we don't have a.
We're looking at contingencies now.
You know, because that's, I mean, obviously, if bad weather gets here, that's beats number one priority, I mean, every, that's no.
Absolutely.
We could go weeks without any conflict, but it could be some, it's my understanding too, I guess, zero rate waste can move it, because while the truck was down, I guess they came and moved something, that's what I, my understanding. Swapped the container around, I was told, or something, I don't know.
I'll have to look into that.
I don't know, I, that's, but I could just be, somebody told me that, and they might not have been.
What we're, when, what we're actively looking for is a part timer with a CDL.
Perfect.
Who could, uh, actually augment us, and we had one lead, and we're pursuing that.
Yeah.
But as we do our interview processes, we're using that as a carrot stick, you get a CDL, we're gonna pay more per hour, and that's probably.
Oh, that, that'll be a handy thing, because that's the other, Pete does go on vacation.
Right.
And we gotta.
And we did work on, you know, some wage scale ideas for that, the last couple of weeks, actually.
That's all right, no problem, that's it, I just wanted to make sure we're gonna kind of go the same way we did last year.
Absolutely.
Kind of talk to Lean, and she said, oh, come in and talk to me.
Yeah, and we, we appreciate your, your helping us out.
Oh, yeah, that's my good deal, we can make it work.
Okay.
That's all, that's all I got.
That's nice.
Yeah.
Okay. All right, we'll move on to the next subject, uh, John Stevens, uh, we're gonna talk about your lighting up, come on up. Thank you, Jeff, for coming out.
Okay.
Jeff, thanks for coming in. Yeah.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you, Mr. Crosby.
Hi, Deb. See you.
John, one question before you leave, um, I know you have, you had two vacancies on the zoning board.
Yeah.
Are you prepared to fill the, uh, potential, uh, alternates, or are you looking for alternates?
We would like to, oh, yeah.
Thing is, I would ask you to prepare a statement, and we, we could put on hot topics to assist you, if anyone's interested from the town, they could approach you and, uh, and like to have you, you know, vet them as possible candidates.
I, I could do something like that.
Okay, just, just an offside, I, I know, because we stole two of your members this year.
Thank you.
Okay, you got the floor, Jeff.
Okay, what am I gonna do with it? I just want this, okay, um. These, uh, figures and whatnot, if I didn't run off a copy of the email I sent, I'm sorry about that, for me. I, I, I was, 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 was asked, asked, at, at, at various, uh, various times to look into three lighting, uh, things, one of them, the, 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 uh, li- library entrance, and another one, the, um, uh, fire and police act, act, exterior lighting, which, which had a couple of, uh, uh, three or so, three or four items that, that are basically not, uh, not working. And then the other items are updates, and, uh, then also the town garage, which has, that's a pretty old, uh, lighting, lighting unit, which is, uh, costing us more, more to, uh, run the lighting, and also, also because of that level of bed, can, uh, assumption, whenever a, um, uh, can, 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 uh, pressure start or something like that, it forces a peak in the load, and that gives us demand charges. So we would be saving more than just the, uh, the lower, the lower, uh, uh, wattage of the new fixtures.
Okay.
And, uh, where we had left off last, uh, last fall, when I, when I was going through this, was that, that, that we would, uh, not, not be able to do these, do these before the, uh, end of the budget expiring. So we said, let's, let's wait until after town, uh, town meeting. And so, at this point, I'm bringing you information, and then saying, how many of these would you want to pre, pre, proceed with based on the budget?
So I see we have essentially three, one, as you said, garage, library, and a safety center.
Right.
Okay.
And in the, the email, which I assume you have a copy, I'll send you.
I don't think we have an email, it's maybe coming.
Okay, yeah, yeah, that, that, that has the, uh, the costs for each.
Okay, well, we've got two proposals, yeah, two, three proposals.
Those are the proposals, yeah. It's a good way to estimate, I'm top here.
Yeah. Yeah, that, um, that lighting has got some age on it, some is not working anymore, um, and, the, uh, oh, what I, what I printed out here didn't print out what I thought it would, the, um, pay, pay, payback, payback on it, assuming we get the, um, the, uh, uh, rebates.
Okay. Who, who puts the rebates through, may I ask, on this?
The contractor does, which, 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 in, uh, this, this case would, uh, would likely be, uh, light tech. Okay, 'cause, 'cause they, they work with, with this, uh, this type of product, as well as being an official, uh, program vendor, you know.
Got any questions?
So, um, tonight, I'm, I'm ba- base, basically, basically saying, here's the info, think about it, uh, work with the budget, figure out which of these items you want to proceed with, and then I can go ahead, go ahead and, um, and if you want more than, than one, uh, quote on the, um, on the library and on the fire and police, I can, I can do that, I, 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 I originally had four, four quotes on the, uh, library, based on in, info I had gotten from them last August correctly, but then, around October, they changed what they wanted, so.
They, okay, we send them quotes, or what's?
Not, 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 no, the, the, uh, library, library.
Oh, the library changed what they wanted.
It first said that that timer in the basement's a real problem, don't work and all that kind of stuff.
Correct.
But, but then they changed it to, we want to use the timer.
Right, I, I seem to recall, I was sitting on the public side in that conversation.
And that, that increased the cost because, because of, uh, of the wiring.
Okay.
Added, uh, added wiring.
Well, Jeff is here, can we ask him some questions on his section of the?
Go for it.
Jeff, this, this lighting is all of it in there now, it's just not with the newer lights? So this estimate of lighting in your garage?
Alls I know about is I, I have a chart down there.
Yeah.
He was, I didn't know exactly what he came up with, we talked about it, and this, I don't.
There it is.
We have a, I guess, maybe the answer to the question is, we have a mixture of lights?
Yeah, right.
We have some fluorescents lights in one part of the garage, and the older part, or the main section, I'm gonna call it, we have some, I don't know, John can tell you what type of light they are.
Metal LED light.
Okay, and they basically, they, some of them came from this community center, when they upgraded those, we kept the lights because they were the same ones we had, and I believe the lights were purchased used a number of years ago, when they were upgraded. So I'm sure the, the efficiency of this still.
Oh, I mean, if.
If any, it has none.
There, there is none.
Yeah, so, uh, who, as I told John, we just wanted to try to replace something that would, you know, give the same, I guess, the same type of light, he had some ideas on what would maybe be better, right?
Yeah.
And obviously cheaper.
Having worked in the factory that made the light bulbs.
Yeah, yeah, exactly, I mean, I, I don't know anything about them, I mean, they.
Well, he's got a spreadsheet, what's, what's I find is interesting is like, you know, the wattage goes from, um, four hundred, like, seventy-five percent cut in wattage.
Right.
For some of the bulbs, and then the other thing is, what I like is, is the payback.
Oh, yeah, it's.
Electricity costs, it pays back at three, almost four years it's paid for.
There's no efficiency down there with these lights, so.
Now, where are you seeing the payback line over here?
Way over on the right.
Okay.
Yeah, and.
Now, the estimated incentives, you said those were from Eversource, and they were?
Right, a- a- and, um, and just about the time I, I got, got this, uh, got this from them, the, the, uh, the two, two thousand sixteen incentive budget went, uh, went dry, so, so we were then moved into this year. And if you do that one, I would advise doing it early in the year before those incentives run out again.
Okay.
Okay.
So the incentive's mainly on that building, not on some of the other buildings?
Right.
Okay.
The, uh, the, uh, the, uh, the, the fire and, uh, police, a lot of those fixtures are not on a whole lot of time. Okay, so, and, and, and that is one of the fixtures, that the, um, features, featured by which you, you qual- qualify. Oh, back on the, uh, metal, metal, uh, halide, right, is the others, um?
Yes.
The, the, uh, the, uh, the metal, metal, like, metal halide bulb life is around ten or fifteen thousand hours, that, that, and, and how that's actually handled is, at that point, half of them will have failed, you know? The, yeah, LEDs are, uh, are fifty, sixty thousand hours, so, 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 so there's, there's less replacement, you, you would likely not have to replace them in our red times.
I like that. I'm gonna be around for a long time, so I hope they last.
Yeah. Well, you could probably need help.
Jeff, could we have you take a look at the list and just make sure that that whole section is what you, you would need for yours, or if you really need part of it, or?
I don't know, part of it, I don't know what I'm looking at. You know what I mean?
Well, I think they labeled on this, uh, location side all the way over on the.
Yeah, I, I got it, I mean, as, I have, we counted them, John, I remember, it was a while ago.
Right, we, uh, we counted them, I, I made up a sketch for, uh, light, light tech about where they all were, and I sent them pictures of the area.
And I kind of talked with John, and he was just experiencing it, to pick or design a light that would give us the type of light we're looking at, you know? Because I, you know, if you tell me we got a light that's X number of lumens, and it's gonna do this, I'm, okay, you know? So I guess, uh, it, it looks like he's got the quantity, right?
Lean, budget-wise, can we, can we talk about that?
Yep.
The, the only, the only question I just got, John?
Yeah.
All these numbers and all this, this is just, this is what you calculated from the type of lights we have, and the ones that we're replacing, what it would cost, I don't know. Or you didn't go, you didn't look at our electric bill?
Oh, oh, yeah.
Well, the only thing I was gonna say about our electric bill, just, you know, several, the tools that run off our air compressor.
Right.
Um, you know, that type of thing, the furnace, I think we talked about the furnace, with the big hot air blower, so I don't know how you separate that out, so.
Oh.
But I, but you, see, you did like a per light calculation or something?
Well, the, actually, it, uh, it wasn't me, I, I know a lot about this stuff, but I also know enough to know when I don't know enough. Okay, right? So I, uh, gave, I, I gathered the information, and I sent it to Light Tech.
Okay.
Okay.
My only concern was, the thing is, um, I was probably ignorant, because I was sitting on the other side, but the thing is, this is a large amount of money, and I see one quote here for one company.
Right.
Do, do we entertain the idea of having more than one company come in and look at this with the same type of project?
We can, however.
Because you have, you have another company over here doing two quotes, and.
Right.
They weren't even more concerned with the garage, now they.
Oh, oh, and, and those two, uh, those two quotes are for two separate. Correct.
Oh, I agree, agreed, but.
Yeah, the, um, the, uh, the first, first go-around on the, um, the, uh, l- l- library, I had three or four quotes on that.
Okay.
But not knowing whether you wanted to move forward with these or not, the, the, uh, the, uh, budget, budget and whatnot, I, 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 I got, uh, 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 um, I have, I have one quote for each, which, which functionally is, is a budget, budget, budgetary quote, except for this, this one here, in, in, uh, my, my experience with the other lighting projects that they have done here, the school gym, and all that kind of stuff, uh, they were right on, because, because, because it's a, uh, rebate program, and the control under tighter, so you tend not to have much of a swing.
Yeah, when we started doing this building?
Yes.
It was like three times as much for the quotes from general contractors, electricians.
Okay.
Versus what this company could do to give us rebates plus, uh, a quality.
Yeah.
Lay.
So they, so you have, this company's good to go then?
That, is this, this, this is the same company that?
Yeah, it's, uh.
They work, they, they work with, um, public service.
Okay.
So they must negotiate or apply for grants, federal grants, and/or, um, negotiate something with, um, Eversource, where they're the go-to company that, like, it's like the state bid, if you have a group.
Okay.
That have, um.
Well, I, what I'm saying, John, they're so good, why should we have them also give a quote on, on these two other projects?
We could.
At least the larger one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
At least the larger one, that, you know, police department and fire department doing.
Yep, but, um, one, one instinct I got, I, 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 I gathered after running a lot of projects and whatnot, was unless we were, the, the, um, the company was, was moderately serious about going ahead with it, I, I, I didn't want to have the vendors incur an extra cost for quote-unquote-unquote-unquote, which, which they eventually find a way to pass it on, they.
Right, yeah.
Right, so, uh, um, where we, um, left, left off on this last, last fall late, was that we didn't know which of these projects we would be going forward with, so, uh, 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 the, uh, the dollar, uh, figures there, I, I could tell you are pretty safe, so.
Those are both yours, I've got two sheets to get to each of them. You wanted to talk about whether we had budget for that?
And we do, we should have to have it, pretty much.
Yep, well, that's something I didn't know, and I wanted to do it well.
Just one other question in reference to the rebates, is the whole build paid, and then we get the rebate back later in the year, Lean, or?
I think.
How was this building done?
I think we pay everything less the rebate, if I remember.
Right.
Yeah.
Right, because, 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 because when the job is finished, they, um, tell, tell, ever.
Eversource.
Eversource that it is finished, qualifies and whatnot, and then they bill us for the portion that is not. EverSource that it is finished, qualifies and whatnot, and then they bill us for the portion that is not covered by the rebate. The, um, the fire and, fire and, uh, police, it took me about a week and a half to, to get a response back from Ever, EverSource, but that one there will, um, likely not, not, not have any rebates because figured into those rebates is the number of hours per year that the lamps will run. And.
We can leave them on.
What? Yeah, but, but there also, also it's being, uh, being, uh, converted from CFLs, which are already moderately efficient, to LEDs, whereas the garage.
This is, this is very close to what we budget any birds are.
Okay, so you have two sheets?
Yeah.
The single sheet is what we've spent so far to date, and I just glossed over it, and I can tell you right now, their fire heat exchanger, I had an encumbrance that from last year's fund, so I'm gonna do an adjustment. I've taken money from last year, spent it down, put it in a liability account, I did not know that she had charged it to this calendar year. So I'm gonna be putting back three thousand one eighty-five. That was an approved encumbrance from last year. So the true expenses to date for general government buildings, seven thousand eighty-eight. And you can see that we have miscellaneous things that we are, um, have to work with, and I think if we start looking at town offices, you're gonna see this, a lot of these things are general town offices. I know one unexpected, um, expense was the overhead garage door, that one, we had a unexpected eight hundred dollar charge, remember we had one?
Yes, the vault.
So that was an unexpected charge that we had to address. And then the thousand seventy-four for the Fisher Engineering, that was an unexpected, uh, expense. The, um, water tanks came in about.
Under, that was.
Under, yeah, and that was, um, budgeted for, let's see, where is that? That's on the second page at the bottom. I added town office, no, that's annual monitoring. Uh, it should be in the library, right?
Mm-hmm.
Oh, there it is, thirty-five hundred dollars, and we came in at twenty-six oh five, so that's under a little bit.
So on the, on the two-page portion, I see on the library.
That's our wish list, that's our budget.
I see lighting twelve fifty.
Yeah, so that came in a, a little under, if we're, if this is the quote.
And is there fire department and police department? Do they have any lighting from our wish list?
No, we did not budget that at, at the time, no.
And how about Jeff's area?
In Jeff's, if you go, see the, um, it's at the top, the highway wording is on the first page, but it continues on the top, so we had repairs and paint exterior. We added ten percent to our two thousand five, fifteen budget to give us seven thousand two twenty-two. Uh, repair of garage door, which, with the fourteen foot, that is, we haven't done yet. Concrete and material cutting, we haven't done that yet. And then framing the new door, we haven't done that yet, so those items, three, last three items, actually four items. There's money in his building, it hasn't been.
Yeah, it's been like that.
Will, 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 uh, have to.
So that, those combined are fourteen thousand seven twenty-seven. Um, again, we keep kicking things down the can, so we wanna make sure that.
I guess, uh, we should probably go over with Jeff, which ones are gonna be more important, I would think, right? Whether it's lighting or door, you know?
We can see now, it's just very expensive.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I foresee this as a, as a, really, within three and a half years, it's essentially paid for itself.
Yeah.
So to me, it's almost, I, I call it a no-brainer because you wanna get, you can get instant, instant savings in electric bill right off.
How long do the incentives, do you inhabit, you know, they're, kind of, the, well, John, does that change every year, or?
Last year, last year, I think that they ran out, maybe.
They ran out, no?
Uh, that's, that's just sort of memory from the thousands of events.
What's the total cost since I stepped out for a minute?
Uh, six, must six thousand dollars.
To the town.
After the rebate.
After the rebate, for the town side.
So it's twelve, it's thirteen thousand approximately installed cost.
Sixty-five hundred.
Yeah, but we don't, as you said, who gets the rebate? The rebate is mailed to the town or is it mailed to the contractor?
It's deducted from the bill from the contractor base.
So that's, 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 I can, I live with that.
Out of pocket, it comes, it's that forty.
Yeah.
Sixty-four hundred.
Okay.
So it's still, you know, under eight thousand dollars.
To do other.
Other question.
So you can still address this. You know, getting something done is better than waiting till next year again.
John.
Yeah.
No, I, I was just taking a minute here, reading, going through this. Now, it looks to me like we're only talking about the lights in what I'm gonna call the main building. When I'm talking about that light, it's, it's like the lean two that's added on to the side. You even know what I'm talking about, cause we're talking ten fixtures, those are the indoor lights I'm taking in?
Um, one, two, and three are indoors, four, five, and.
Is that, I guess what I'm trying to ask you is, does that take care of the whole interior of the building, or that older section that was like forty by seventy or something, and then we have that lean two on the side?
Uh, um, the, um.
The lean two had fluorescents strips.
And, and, and that is number three.
I was thinking that, that's, takes care of that one.
Yeah.
Eight-foot strips, quantity six, and we're gonna put six of the other type of lights back in there?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, 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 those are.
And I understood that.
Yeah.
Okay. Well, that's, that's all.
Yeah, so, so four and five are the, um.
One of them's the outside light.
Both, both are outside.
Exactly, the quantity two.
Yeah, two, and then one, the, the, uh, the one is the one that's, I, I believe, down, down, down.
Oh, yeah.
Down the gas pump area.
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's what I thought. So this is the old, I'm gonna call it street light, that's what we just call it.
Yeah.
Or no other.
Which, uh, which, uh, people, people were saying when they got on there, they catch the light, they have trouble seeing.
Yeah, that's, that's.
So they, 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 they're.
So basically, under just the highway.
Yeah.
In this description, those, excluding the tank inspections.
Right.
That comes to fourteen thousand seven twenty-seven. So Bob was just mentioning, what do we want to do when we look at these other repairs? Is there something that we can prioritize so that we can possibly start saving, take advantage of the rebate? And start saving some costs in the town?
I really wanna get that door done, we put it off last year, yeah.
That's a fourteen, that's a fourteen-foot door?
Yes, upgrading from a twelve-foot portion. That's width.
Oh, width, oh, yeah, that's.
The concrete cutting isn't part of that?
We were gonna just rent a saw and do it ourselves.
Okay.
We were gonna, we put a cost in there for it, I think. But we figured it would be an in-house cost, we, we can rent a saw for two hundred dollars. And it's, it's the type of job we could do ourselves.
Okay.
Um, but I think there is a number in there maybe.
Yep, there is, two thousand for concrete.
Yeah, so I mean, it's.
So like some of the.
Our labor would, we'd supply our own label.
Right.
You know, comes out of payroll.
Or some of the painting may get delayed or something, if we do lighting first.
Yeah, I mean, I, the lighting is, that's huge, I mean, you get that kind of rebate, I mean, cause it saves money, I mean, uh, need the paint too, so I mean, it's.
Do you get much light with the fourteen-foot door?
How much more light would you get? Only when it's open.
All right.
At, at a, what you're trying to call, depending on.
Yeah. Uh, you know.
What's that?
I, I can hear what you have to say about this.
Oh, no, I was just looking at, you know, we went there one time to do an inspection.
Yes.
The lighting's poor.
Yeah, it is.
It was dirty day.
And there's always one hard time.
Yeah, that's daytime, you know?
Yeah.
Uh, so I think if you invest that money into the lighting, and you're gonna recover the rebate, I think that's the only assurance we need.
That the rebate will.
That the rebate will apply. Then I, I would figure we're going with this because you'd have money to do some of that other work, including your door.
Eighty-two, eighty-two hundred.
No, I, I think it, to me, it sounds like a wise decision, to be available.
And I'm looking at the library one, and the library one, the bid is less.
And then you watch it.
Was quoted, and they've been complaining for a while.
Yeah.
So that at least we get two out of the way, and the only one I can see maybe getting some competitive bids is, uh, the electrical services for.
Safety center.
The safety center.
Fire, which, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, a- a- and the, uh, the, uh, contractor who, who I, uh, couple of, couple of things. Last time I was in, there, there was some talk about, well, it's a small job and it's to fix a problem, so do we really need to have the multiple bids? And I wasn't clear what, how that went.
It's just, the libraries, as Bob said, I think is acceptable, no, no issue, and that's a safety issue too, of people exiting the library. So I, I think we can, we can move on from that, but I would agree, maybe just another, maybe a little more closer look at some of the bids for the, it's a five-thousand-dollar job.
And, yeah.
Excuse me, if we, if we don't get the rebates on just the, we will have to get more than one bid if it's over our allotted money. So the rebates are important to us, I think, you know, maybe we'll get something in writing from them on that, because if not, we will have to get three competitive bids on that building at least.
Yeah, yeah, and, and Lighttech's, Lighttech's thing here is called a good faith estimate.
Yeah.
So if we decide to go ahead, I didn't, did not wanna bother them with a firm quote until we were reasonably sure we would go ahead.
I would think, I'm, I'm ready for the, some, hold on a second.
Does this include removal, the old ones as well, John, or is that?
Yes.
They would take care of all that?
Yep.
Yeah, it was stated down there in the document.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I didn't, I probably didn't read it.
Okay, so.
I can give you a couple of, um, local electricians that I've, we've done business with besides, you know, electric, so.
Yeah, I, 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 I'd, um, I'd like, like to, um, to, to filter those based on the type of work they do. One reason I, I, I went with, uh, with Dodd for the first look, is he, like, like the lights on the side of the school there. He did those, uh, he's been doing some parking lots and whatnot, and so.
The thing is, which is, I mean, if he's in the, if this is very close to another competitive, I, I would have no problem with entertaining that again, but thing is, we just don't have the information here to make a decision on that particular, it's just too big, that's all.
And, and are you saying that, uh, Lighttech cannot give us a quote on this? Cause if they can cut that in half with, um, a rebate?
Well, um, I really, really doubt that, that they can, I, uh, I contacted Ever, EverSource on that, 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 that subject. They, they did not rule on it, but, but they gave me a list of information we should give them to judge, judge it and whatnot.
Okay.
And one of the items was how many hours a year? And I know that, that there's a big difference between the town garage and most of the lighting uh, used, used on the, um, the, uh, fire, fire, and, uh, fire and police, so I, I am somewhat doubtful that, that we would.
Qualify for a rebate?
Yeah, not that I won't ask.
Okay, yeah, we're gonna revisit that, okay, let's bring it to the board. How about I say, this, this, Brian, I know you had some, you worked with this quote before, you have any input on this, you'd like to offer it to the town?
Uh, when we looked at it last time was kind of a, well, you say no-brainer, to borrow your phrase there, I mean, you're gonna hoop that money back in three and a half years, maybe three, three, forty years. You're gonna have much better lighting, it's safer down there for those folks to work and, and do their jobs, and also, you know, that rebate is.
Yeah, so we're looking at.
You know?
Okay.
It'd be, you know, you still would come to take advantage of it.
Thank you for, go ahead, sir.
John, the, says the project must pass the EverSource screening test, is that in just, in the beginning to make sure it complies? So, I mean, we would know that would pass before the stuff's installed? You following him getting out with that? You don't have to put all the lights in and then, and then it passes the test and we're out for rebate?
Yeah, that's, that's our.
It's a sexual plan that the, the.
Uh, 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 the, the, uh, the, um, the, uh, list of questions I got on the fire and fire and police question was, uh, basically, uh, 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 what are you going to do?
Okay, so it's pretty basic.
Well, it's, it, they wanted the, um, part numbers of the new fixtures, the part numbers of the old fixtures, the number of hours per year, that they were, they were, they were like, like, uh, nine items.
Okay. Okay, I'm gonna close the, bring it to the board again. Further discussion.
Or do you wanna hold off on the others for, uh?
The, the problem is, we, we've held off a long time already, and I think it's time to.
I just wanted to.
I, I understood, but it's, it's time that we start, um, executing, cause the year's almost halfway over.
The library came in a little bit under, and they've been looking at this for quite some time, so probably a good thing to address it. And it's off of the list, you know, and, and we're, we're not spending what we intended to spend, so, that's a plus. This is important here, I think, the garage, you know, knowing that if we're gonna get the rebate, I think they need the lighting down there, you know?
Yeah. And there, we, we are replacing old, old tech with LEDs, which, which is a far larger gain than at the fire and, fire and, fire police. Uh, 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 a far larger reduction in, um, and, you're, you're watching, yeah.
Okay, Jim, can I, can I get a proposal?
I can start off.
Please.
I wanna break this down for the three different proposals, but I make a motion that we accept the bid from Dodd Electrical for the, um, upgrades in the library lighting, a total of eleven ninety-seven point six nine.
Yeah, I was stuck with that.
Any further discussion?
No.
Here in all favor?
Uh, hi. Well, I wanted to, I wanted to, uh, take and table the, um, the proposal on the town safety building, the police and fire, until, uh, John Stevens will get a second quote from one of the companies that might offer us some savings.
Mm-hmm. Or, or to verify the quote.
Yes. And one of the thought on that, originally, I had it, um, I had it working out that, um, on the, um, this, um, it's around here, you know, that there's, there, there's, that there's A, two, J down here. Uh, um, one, that's a quote that I was having, is A, B, F, and H are all things which, which are currently in a, uh, 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 failed mode.
Yeah.
So would we act on those first?
I would think we could act on the whole thing if you want us back a.
Quote, yeah.
A secondary quote.
Okay.
I agree with that.
Yep.
You know, and then we could work on the whole thing all at once, cause it might cost more to have them come back twice, John.
Uh, uh, yeah, cause, because, because, because when I spoke to Dodd, I said, can you quote it, you know, you, you know, you know, doing these first and that later? And, and he says, I can, but the overall cost will be higher because I gotta come back.
Yeah, so, so I think we'd rather act on them all at once if we get another quote.
Okay.
And then the, uh, and, and that's get, get two more quotes or one more quote? I think with the price of the money there, one additional quote would be sufficient, what do you guys think?
I think a validating, it'd be a validating quote if it came in significantly less, we lose profit.
You, you said you knew a couple?
Yeah, typically, it's three that we're looking for.
I was gonna say.
And if you make an attempt to contact someone and they don't return your call, then that's justified as, uh.
So it's, it's.
So we wanna try to reach out to three different companies.
Three attempts.
Yeah, yeah.
And we have one, so you need two more companies.
I can get you the numbers that I have for a couple of people.
Now, on the town garage, on the town garage, what I'd like to do is, uh, ask John Stevens to get, instead of a good faith estimate, a hard estimate from them, including our incentive, so we can have the exact cost that would expend the town, so that we can make a motion on that very quickly for you and get going on it.
So, so that would basically be a contract?
Yeah.
Yes.
Right, and.
They could work with this and what John has proposed for them, and they're, accept it, it would be a contract?
Right, and, and, it, that was the intent, which is, which is why the first pass. Right, and, and, that was the intent, which is, which is why the first pass, we needed in kind of a hurry, because I'm trying to get things done.
Yeah.
They, they, they did that as, as a good, a good faith. Now, I'll, I'll tell them, convert that to a hard quote.
And, so in other words, sharpen the pencil?
And something else, John, if maybe they look at this second building and had them working on the buildings, you know, almost at the same time, if they gave us an estimate on the other building and they come in with some good numbers on that.
Well, see, that's something that they don't typically do, they work with rebates and Eversource.
Yeah.
Um, and I think what John was saying is the exterior and the use of the water wouldn't qualify us for a rebate?
It's doubtful, because, 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 because a lot of those lights are just turned on when they, they need access to the parking lot. Or, or one, or, one or two are, are, are on a motion center, so it is only when somebody pulls up. Right, it, it isn't something that gets drawn there and they're working this stuff.
Well, the thing is, I like to withdraw your motion, I'd like to reward that.
How do you wanna reward it?
Well, the thing is, uh, we're gonna convert it to an actual quote, if it's within the ballpark of the estimated cost, that we can, we can leave the town administration to execute without having to come back for another vote. As it was, agreed, how does that work?
Yeah, that would work, I think we've done it.
I think the chair would look at it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay.
You'd have to sign a proposal, but you're asking for a quote again, and you're, you just said quote, not.
Well, I mean, not a proposal, I want an actual contract drafted, and if the contract drafted is very close to what we have here, then we can execute.
I'm good with that.
Right, you guys would be signing the contract, but it would be to say, John, that.
Okay, then I make a motion that we just go ahead and develop a contract and prepare for signature for next meeting.
I don't know whether I can get it done in a week, but.
Well, the thing is, that's, we'll put it as a goal.
Yes.
And that, and the thing is, if it takes two weeks, it takes two weeks, we just put it as a goal for one week.
And in other words, as soon as I get it, I'll get it back.
Yeah.
Just as a point of information, the board can actually make a vote and authorize the town administrator to sign the contract in your state. That way you could expedite it that much quicker, so you don't have to wait for a meeting.
I was thinking, this has been a couple times.
I think, I think what, what's happening here is, let's say he gets the final quote or estimate on Friday, that means we have to wait another full week before the board signs it.
That's what I don't wanna do.
If it's, if there are no changes to this.
You didn't say to the board.
Yeah, you said, yeah, I'll review it with you, and we'll go from there.
There's enough for a selectmen around town, you know, five times a week, I think we should be able to look at it.
Oh, yeah, okay.
So how do you wanna reward it?
Oh, you gotta help me out here, okay, all right, make a proposal?
Proposal or a motion?
A motion, that we pursue a contract with Lytec Incorporated for the lighting of the town gar- town of Dunbar Garage. To be reviewed by the town administrator and when selectmen for, for final approval. Period. Do I have a second?
I'll second it, I'm doing all of those tonight anyways.
Any further discussion, we'll put this to bed, any further discussion, we discussed it, we killed it tonight.
Nope.
Okay, okay, sir, all in favor?
Aye.
Uh, you have your marching orders, sir?
Yes.
We look forward to having seen the contract dropped off, the office, as soon as feasible, okay? Thank you for all your work.
John, if you can work this out one timeframe, do you think you'd wanna do?
Um, probably three or four weeks at least.
Oh, good, I just, this, this time of year, all the snowplow gear, so it's a lot easier to get around the building, if it gets to be, if it gets to be October and October and November, and we get all that stuff in there, we'll be peeing the bumper, everybody, I stand now.
And I don't think, they have, they have drawn a flyover, but.
Yeah, so I mean, I, I figured it probably would be.
Still, it's better.
Yeah, well, for me, yeah, props, whatever you can do with that.
Yep.
Thanks, appreciate it.
Yep.
Sounds good.
We will let it feel like.
Yeah, well, those lights are bad, I mean, they're, they're old, they're gonna.
Well, Hal, when I saw Hal's lights on the list, I'm saying, oh my god, those are like, like, you see the meter going round and round when you see those.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you, John.
Just, just if I don't, from, from my own notes, because, because I'm not taking notes the way.
Understood.
Yeah, the, the, the libraries that go ahead as is?
Yes, sir.
All right, so, so I can.
With that aspect that you had already.
And then it's the fire and police we need to get.
Two, shoot for two more.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for all your work.
Oh, we appreciate it.
Thank you, John.
John, I hope these quotes come in a little bit lower cost, because I know LED lights just dropped another couple dollars this week.
Yeah, that's another thing, yeah, well, we'll see where they are next week.
I, I see it, I hear you, okay.
Well, they're not coming, now you didn't play hard.
Okay, we're gonna move on.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, Mr. Don Larson?
Yep.
Come on up, sir.
Don Larson, Cemetery Trustee, and I have come to, we have found a replacement for Annette Coon's seat on the board of the Cemetery Trustees. And uh, we'd like to nominate Brian Pike to fill the one year remaining on Annette Coon's seat. I guess that's.
Okay. Did you get the, the, the library trustees also get the other gentleman who was interested? Did they get the, acknowledge that the other gentleman, we had another gentleman who was also interested in serving?
The library trustees?
Yeah, I sent it to you electronically in the email.
I'm sorry, to the cemetery trustees.
Cemetery, yes, Judy, Judy and I are both on the same page.
Okay, very good, I just wanna make sure that at least all candidates were considered.
And she couldn't make it tonight, so I came.
Okay, now, that was John Hurley, he's got his information and request to be on the Cemetery Trustee Board.
Who did?
John Hurley, I sent it to you through your email, and I put the original copy in your mailbox.
He gave us a notice in the mailbox last week.
That's what I was referring to.
Oh, okay.
I wanted to make sure we were clear on it, so.
Yeah, oh, no, 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 that's, that's all right, no, I didn't, I didn't know anything about that.
Oh, no.
No, okay.
Well, the person they're appointed, just the, the person they're appointing is familiar with the cemetery. And I think for them, it's gonna be a learning curve that somebody can guide them through. So I think it's probably a good idea to have someone that's been there for such a long time, that has the institutional knowledge.
I'm not disagreeing with you, I just wanna give due diligence to the process, and somebody handed us in a written request.
I just wanna make sure that was at least a dollar, that's all, that was my intention.
And it was.
Yeah, so.
Now, the reason we'd like to have Brian is because Judy, her first meeting was last week, I've had two meetings. And uh, you know, things, I've gotten a couple of calls, you know, about, you know, putting monuments in, and, you know, I don't, I don't know. So for the sake of, at least for this next year, and that when he writes out the term, and that why we need his expertise.
Okay. Gentlemen, it's up to us.
And is it usually the Cemetery Trustees asked for an appointment?
Yep, this is one that's specific to the trustee.
So that's, you know, and, and I guess that was my point.
I think it's not any different than the others, right, we get a recommendation from the board.
Is that for the cemetery, is that specific to cemetery?
Yeah, I printed out a copy of it. It says vacancy shall be filled by the selectmen for the remainder of the term if somebody.
Oh, it's the term, I was thinking of, where is.
They all have to be going through town meeting for, you know, like, like Brian did, everybody else ran, and then after that. But we obviously take recommendation from every, you know, board as we go through. I just don't wanna do, I just don't wanna do, you know, hurry this through without letting him at least consider him, and then, you know, maybe voting on it next week. Especially where he gave us, you know, a letter over a week ago when they weren't aware of it.
Yep, it's in your basket, and I scanned it to you in an email to you and Judy, because there's nobody else, so I don't know if it, if it, you have a lot of emails out there, so I may have sent it to the wrong email.
Okay, because I check my email almost every hour.
You do.
You probably could check it right now on your phone.
I sent it last, I sent it last Friday.
And, and the thing is, Brian, I salute the fact you helped and wanna help out here, but the thing is, I, we, there's been, when we rush to make an appointment, mistakes can be made, and I think it's, I think it's only, the board should just look at all the people who put their name in there, and then, and then come back to us, and we can make a decision. Yeah, and that's all, that's the only thing I ask, because now I'll get the mail and.
His letter is in your basket.
Yeah, because I just don't wanna make a decision tonight, not have them at least look at their, all the people that asked. And if we make a decision without even looking at them, I think that, you know, people could come back and say.
Sure, no, I understand.
Uh, I mean, just to be fair, if I may speak.
Please.
Um, the, the night that resigned, they actually already had made the decision and asked me, and it took me this long to take and actually give some thought and such. And uh, so, I mean, they've already made their decision back at the meeting. Because now if they're gonna do that, they're gonna have to have a special meeting, because they can't do a town business without getting together, so.
Well, I don't think you could, could talk about it or have a special meeting, there's only two people that talk about it.
Yeah.
Yeah, still, you still have to do town business, you gotta do it by the rules. They have to have a meeting, they have to have minutes, they have to discuss it, because they've already done all right, you know, they called me that night.
When was that meeting?
First Tuesday of, uh.
First Tuesday of the month, the fourth.
April fourth.
I still don't think we should rush through it, so.
Just wait one week and get feedback.
So, I mean, you're a guest.
I, I, would you, I, I have no, I would rather wait one more week.
No, that's fine, next, next Thursday.
The thing is, your decision may be the same, but the thing is, I think everyone deserves due consideration, and if you had no consideration, it's like saying, you know, what, what, what kind of people are we, we have no consideration?
Oh, that's fine.
Yeah.
I think we all agree, that, you know, somebody that's been on there for a long period of time is obviously gonna have more knowledge than somebody that's not been on there at all.
Yeah, and maybe interpreted as we need the knowledge now.
Yes.
And the thing is, I, I see exactly where you're coming from, and.
Well, we offered Brian the, the position from when we had our meeting of the first of the month.
Okay.
And so, and he wanted to think it over, so it was opportunity back on.
But what, what had happened is that letter was received a week ago.
Yeah.
And last meeting, we made it, the thirteenth, we made the motion at that time to pass it on to the, the, the board of the Cemetery Trustees to, for, for consideration, that's all it was. Okay, so we'll just table it for one week, and we'll, we'll let you hear back from you in one week.
Okay, yeah, that sounds good. And I'll give it to Judy and give you a notice that we're gonna have a special meeting.
Yep, do you wanna contact him and get his one-on-one?
Yeah, I'll, I'll call John.
Yeah, okay.
So.
Could even invite him to the meeting, so that way you guys can actually meet with him if you want. You can actually invite him to the meeting, so you guys can actually talk to him.
Yeah, one other thing, before we close it, I think you guys can have alternatives like any other group, so maybe, you know, there's another chance, you know, put an alternate.
I don't know if that was passed, Cemetery Trustees was one of them that didn't have it.
It's stated in here that you guys could have up to two, I think, but.
Okay, then they did, then they did pass that law, because last year when I went to training, it was in limbo at the time.
I don't know if the town had to adopt it or not, Brian, I'll have to read further on it, but.
That might be something that you may wanna look at, the alternates?
You know, because a lot of other boards have alternates on it, so people can move in, and that way they have a little bit of knowledge, so if somebody leaves a board, you're not stuck with a board with no knowledge in it.
I think that, that'd be something to seriously consider.
Yeah.
And so I would look at the RSA and consider as an alternate, because uh.
Yeah, the first one we ever had people actually interested in doing.
Exactly, exactly, so let's, uh, let's grab.
We've got them standing in line.
So let's grab it, grab, grab the interest while we have it and utilize it.
Yeah, yeah, I think, I think, Don, would you like that RSA Cemetery Trustee?
Is that something you printed offline?
Yeah. There you go.
Thank you.
Okay, so I think, I think we got an action plan on that.
And that would be helpful, because you have another green board, it doesn't have, you don't give them direction, so.
Yeah. That works, thank you, Don.
Yeah, thank you.
And thank you, Brian, for your, your feedback too, it's good. Okay, uh, general town business. All right. I got lots in the mailbox, okay, I have, first of all, I just wanna make sure, when you show this, this is the, you guys both have, this is the transfer station attendee.
Yeah.
Attendant, rather, and it's just a.
That'll be the, the original copy that I'll keep in the file.
Do we wanna give a turn of John at that?
Yes, we do.
Oh, okay.
So we all, yeah, and then also we have, last week, if you recall, we, we established new weight scale for that position we created, was the transfer station.
Yep.
Assistant manager?
Yep, and, right, and what you guys had mentioned, those rates were the top scale, and I had to subtract the five percent to get them into the free deal.
And so that's, that can be put to file. And then the, this was something you requested. Let me pass this along, that's that. As far as, there was, Linda Langer came back and she gave us some of what's available.
Oh, she did give us the available.
She sure did, that's what that is.
Yeah, I guess she had done it from what her notes said before.
Yeah.
And we have positions coming up this year for uh.
So I think your question was, were there any that were, that needed to be filled?
How many don't? Vacancies.
Right, and we write down to just the KTFCA, which is appointed by the Kinkanawick Town Forest.
Yeah.
And then the central neighborhood regional planning for that representative, so when that comes up, central needs to typically contact us.
Yeah.
And then we ask the, that person if they're still interested in continuing. So other than that, I think we're looking.
Oh, let me, let me write that down. All right, then we have a right to know request, this is from Brian, for the non-public meeting minutes for six, did you get those minutes?
Yes.
Okay, and did you get the secretary of meeting?
Not as of yet, I probably said there was no hurry, whenever that happened.
I checked in my file, and I don't have them.
Okay.
Um, I was told a while ago that I should destroy everything, so like, every other week I throw, throw everything in the fire.
Okay, is that satisfactory, sir?
The only thing I can give you is what I have on my hard drive before any changes were made to it, I don't know.
And there weren't changes.
I don't think there were much, maybe.
That's fine.
But I'm, well, I'll be happy to give you a copy of that.
We have a copy.
Very good, thank you.
And this is a.
I did read it, Brian, it's very close to what I had written down.
Thank you.
Almost exactly.
Okay, then we, this was an FYI, Lean established a Survey Monkey on their website, and I'm gonna let you explain what you did.
Um, based on the interest of the residents looking to get alternative internet providers, he had asked if there was a way for us to get the, some kind of a survey out there that people might be interested in completing, and tried to keep it simple. I came back from the interested, the, the company they're looking to do business with, that they mentioned if we do this type of survey, that we should leave their name off of it and keep it as a generic, so that um, they're not tied into any type of commitment. But Jim, Jim Bavon is still working with Comcast, trying to get.
A meeting set up.
Meetings set up with that.
Thing is, we're, we're in the ready, that's all I'm gonna say for Jim, he's gonna, you know, do his part.
Yeah.
How was this done, through our website?
Yeah, yeah, it's just a link to, I went to Survey Monkey.
I think I seen it there and I skipped over.
We have an account.
Jane, oh, I gotta put this over here for her, I'm sorry.
You don't need internet in your place, or do you have?
I do, and it's slower than heck the last couple weeks, I'm not sure what I'm about to call him, I, seems like it's stumbling.
Well, it's on the home, it's on the homepage, so we moved it, because there's so many things on Hot Topics, we just moved it to the homepage, make it easy for people to respond. And you can only do it once, it's very sensitive.
Okay, now, this is a question that I brought up, if, if we recall, this is when we had a, when Brian Pike was being nominated for the planning board.
Yeah, I read it.
Okay, you read it, and just for the record, when it involves an individual, not an employee, the individual has the right to make it public.
Which we asked.
Which we asked, the selectmen determine who are the members of the non-public session.
Yeah.
And so, for the future, if it ever arises again, it's us three will deter, determine who is in this non-public session. And so, um, for the future, if it ever arises again, it's us three will deter, determine who is in this non-public session.
Yep.
And, uh, and, but the, the first, if it involves an individual, reputations being discussed, it's, the, the individual is always given the opportunity to make it public.
Yep.
That's just a, I only asked that for point of clarification, because I wanted to move the subject along, but I wanted to make sure we did it. We had a precedent set, we're doing it the right way. And so I don't think we're a hundred percent correct the other night, but I, I feel better now that we were...
We actually work, it says it's a judgment call of the boards.
Right. Okay, let me see. Okay, continuing on, uh... This letter, I referenced in this individual, maybe we'll non-public on this one?
Um...
This is, uh, Jim, this is the one I talked about last time, which is, it's a reputation thing.
Can you, can you keep it just generic, generic, that you have, um, received the request through the town clerk? That you, uh, you also wanted to bring up what your findings were with the secretary of state, right, Bob?
Right.
That's what I'm saying, you wanna go...
I thought you said you were gonna do that, non-public earlier.
Yeah, it's up, it's something we can discuss now, we wanted a non-public on that.
Well, as you said, we could discuss it generically.
Okay, just that...
I'm the second selectman that's met with the secretary of state's office on this issue, only this time I had the, uh, the court transcript, or whatever the judge decided.
Yeah.
That page that was provided to us, that I brought with me, the person looked at it, said, this doesn't mean anything, you need a discharge. And she doesn't know what the discharge looks like, cause they've had a lot of requests, but they've never had someone come in with a discharge, which probably means that when the person got the discharge, there's no reason to go to the secretary of state's office. But as it is now...
They file it with the town clerk at that point.
As it is now, uh, they can't hold office.
Yeah, I read through all that.
Okay, I thought the, the letter was all written, now.
We're gonna need to give that to her right now.
Oh. This one?
Yeah.
You thought you just passed it on?
It was all business, we just wanted to...
He does keep going with that piece.
Yes.
Oh, you did write it down?
See?
I missed that, I'm sorry. Yeah, you gotta get it past me.
So, I think is, I thought the, the responses were written, will, uh, basically give, uh, full witness to the individual involved.
Yep.
And to the appropriate distribution here.
And the town clerk, yeah.
Right, it's all distribution, that's perfect. And I'm gonna ask, um, uh, maybe could I ask you to hand deliver a sealed envelope for me later on? Thank you.
Sure.
We'll save some postage?
Sure.
Okay.
Um, we may not wanna do that.
That's all right, it's not a problem, if it's sealed, I can't see anything.
It's gonna be sealed. I know, but I, I just thought we should just go through the regular mail and have it all.
Okay.
You know, instead of hand deliver, I think it should go through the mail and just have the proper paper trail.
Then you probably wanna have it...
Certified.
Certified.
Yeah, I just think it'd be a better way to go.
I have no problem with it.
How, how do you want me to write this in here?
Very...
Generally. I just leave the names off and it just...
Okay, I'll just state what it is and that's it.
Right.
Okay.
Okay, uh... I have a next subject, um, I have something, we're referencing the Kelsey Road, and, uh, so I'm gonna ask you to recuse yourself.
Okay.
And, uh, you can either stay in the public or you can leave the, uh, the general meeting area.
Oh, just go to the public, I guess.
Okay. Thank you, Dave. Okay, uh, I'll just set up a meeting next week, uh, regarding Kelsey Road, lawsuit that's pending. And, uh, so, uh, is, if you can give me a couple days that's available for you, and we can go with Lee and set up that meeting.
Okay.
I'm available pretty much all week, and I can do it in the morning sometime.
I think the response from the attorney was that he's not in the office on Friday, so he's available Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday.
Do it Monday, or...
Monday, get it done. Okay.
Um, prefer morning?
Morning, mid-morning.
Okay.
I can get up late that way.
Unless, unless he gets up early, I don't mind.
Ten AM, is that?
Ten AM, sounds like a plan.
Because that'll give you time to get...
Transportation.
And, and you're looking to meet with him at, at their office?
Correct.
Okay.
It's not so easy to find.
I'm sorry?
Not so easy to find, give yourself some plenty of time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is this, is this something, right, just a letter from Charles Douglas concerning...
A letter to.
To, excuse me.
Yeah.
To.
Turning, um, uh, right to hold office.
Uh, concerning ability to run for office for a certain citizen of Dunbar.
Yes.
That's all you need to know, right?
That's all. Okay, is there any further discussion on this meeting coming up? Should we invite anyone else, or just, I can make sure one selectman's there, uh, two selectmen here, one, sorry, you can't come to this one, that's okay. And, uh, town administrator can come also, could you bring some of the paperwork that we made, made, made?
Yep, yep, I'll bring everything.
Some historical paperwork?
Yeah.
Okay.
Two big stacks of paperwork.
Yes, okay, in the event we need them.
Should I write two, actually two, and then, uh, an answer from?
Right.
Okay. From his office, does that sound firm?
Can you sign that as well?
Oh, that was supposed to...
Yeah, that's just a letter to send.
Okay, I, I don't think there's any further discussion, Kelsey Road, come on up, sir.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, I missed the whole Kelsey Road thing, so I'll have to get it from you.
I will, uh...
I was concentrating on that.
There'll be a selectman, uh, two selectmen will be attending a Kelsey Road meeting, along with the town administrator, targeted date, next Monday at ten AM, at the attorney's office representing the town.
You realize it's a non-meeting, right?
It's non-meeting, correct.
It's non-meeting, no posting, no...
Correct.
Your selection's in the town administrator.
Yep. Okay, all right, we have, uh, some hirings, we're gonna do a, a discussion on, on hirings, and, but before we go any further else, I'm gonna pull up the vacation paperwork. All right. I'd like to take a moment, uh, just to explain what we're doing, but we're looking at vacation, uh, the way the vacation rules are written, and the way they're written, and the way our policy's written, is hard to understand. I like to take, uh, like to look at this homework, I like to see some language for next week, where we can simplify this language, and essentially say that after you reach your certain tenure, your, your vacation time kicks in.
On your anniversary.
On your anniversary date. We just gotta come up with some language for next meeting, and...
We can work on that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right?
This affects a certain individual, um, I attempted to do a payroll history, but our payroll only goes back to five years, so anything before then, which would have affected me and Chris Remillard, um, it's too far out for me to, to load that information, so...
Well, we can go off here, uh, recollect towards it, you know, we talked about it for the last couple weeks now, so...
But essentially, the, the verbiage is, the verbiage up top, it's, it's, uh, you read it and you can interpret it two different ways.
Right.
And I think we can make, we gotta make some clar, present clarity to it.
Yep.
And I don't wanna do it right now, because we'd be wordsmithing all night.
Right, yeah.
And so we'll just come up with some proposals for next week, and that's our homework assignment. Okay?
Okay. And this is about the three different versions.
Hey, it's, we'll have versions in front of it, we can deal with that. All right, I have a legislative bulletin that came out, yeah, should've sent you, been sent to everyone on email.
Yep.
And, get that done. I'm running out of, my inbox is coming empty, I'm gonna open up the public comment again. Lee, anything for us?
Oh, you're gonna come with us?
Sure. Like, we're just, it's, okay, just do it.
Yeah, I got two things, Lee Martel, I have two things, one's fairly quick, as, uh, I was, uh, fortunate to be at the last Conservation Commission meeting, and at that meeting, a, an organization came before the, uh, commission to discuss this, uh, workforce housing?
Yes.
And I don't know, I haven't seen them come before you people.
They have not, they have come, they have, uh, we had the same, uh, general discussion at the planning board last night.
Oh, okay.
Uh, it was just a, a awareness of it, that they were in town and they went to...
Yeah, but it's awareness of it, but you get a lot of information from it.
Absolutely.
You might wanna know what's happening.
Yes.
You're referring to the planning board, because that's the level that they would take this?
No, I understand, uh, I understand, but the selectmen should know what's going on, too.
I, I can help summarize, uh, well, why don't you summarize, so you were there, I was not, so please, from the conservation point of view, give me your summary.
Well, they, they presented, uh, their plan with the Conservation Commission, but because, they went to them first, because they wanted to talk about possibility of putting some of it in, uh, in, uh, a conservation easement. And so with that, there was discussion that followed, and, uh, my concern was, as I asked them if they had thought of the school, schooling for the kids, all these kids need interpreters, all these kids gonna have issues. This is gonna be five units, five units, they figured three to four kids per unit. So, I said, this, they said, well, Manchester deals with it, and I said, Manchester's a much larger city with different revenue system, I said, this comes right out of our pockets, that's why I figure everybody should know what's going on.
Yeah, I, I can, I hear what you're saying.
Yeah.
Uh, things like knowledge, uh, the planning board embraced, basically the same report from a different person, uh, there was no, I don't see any differing of the facts, as you recall, as you, we just recollect it.
Mm-hmm.
Um, it situates awareness, but there, someone's actually looking at, uh, putting some workforce housing in.
Yep, I, I did receive the call, and the gentleman tried to clarify it for me, and he, um, he said that he's negotiating at this point, is probably a two-year plan.
Right.
But he is looking to, um...
What, what, how I viewed it, as going to the Conservation Commission, they're trying to get some buy-in by some, not buy-in, but support from other people.
Well, of course, naturally.
Coalition building.
Right, the coalition building.
Yeah, but, but my point is, uh, and you know, again, you being the town father, so you should know what's cooking, too, and, and again, to pass it on, if you could get, uh, uh, someone to come in and speak to you guys, it would be on video, so other people would know, in town.
The, as I said, the first step would be to go to the planning board, which they have not had any...
Yeah, no, and I know that, because they were told they can't even get on the next, uh, agenda, because it's too late, they're too late for that next one. But my point is, so you, so everybody knows what's gonna be happening, everybody can be prepared, or at least throw their two cents worth in.
Absolutely.
Because, you know, it's, you can't stop it, that's not my point, my point is...
You might be able to minimize the Impact. Impact, and so, as I said, they should, if they're gonna be speaking to the different boards, committees, commissions... Now, out of curiosity, I, Conservation Group, did they not embrace it?
Uh, they did not vote on it.
Okay.
There were some that were a little apprehensive about voting on it that night, some were saying, fine, uh, one person smartly said, I would go along with this, I would back it, as long as you put it all in conservation easement, because what happens is if this does not work out in five years, and they sell it to a developer, you know, so, my point is, if more people know about it, the more brains are working here to try to, as I said, minimize the impact, you know?
So, the, uh, the same, uh, thank you for bringing it to us, as it was brought to the planning board last night. So, again, it says, uh, I think the committees in town are starting to get aware of what's, what's, what's potentially coming down the pipe.
Yeah, I, I had heard about it before, this was the first opportunity I had to hear from them, what their plans were, you know, and so it, it's a little different when you're sitting there listening and, and asking questions and getting the answers, you know, you get a little more information out of it that way.
No, that was, that was, thank you for bringing it up.
Okay, I have another thing I'd like to...
Two things tonight?
Yes.
You did say two.
Yep, uh, where are we going with this bridge? Are we moving on that or not? I would've said, talked to Jeff earlier, but I think it was out of turn, so I didn't wanna...
Well, as I understand, he still has a, a request for more information he's gotta provide.
Yeah, I think it's been provided, it's just, it's in the hands of, um, DES, they have to give the blessing and...
But that request came in about a couple weeks, several, how many weeks ago?
Did he say it's like six weeks, could be, take up to six weeks or something?
No, but when did he get the request for more?
Oh, it's been two, three weeks at least.
And he asked me that.
Yeah.
And that will determine the grant af- after that, right?
It's no grant.
No, 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 it's no grant, it's, 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 uh, it's like, uh...
Determine what?
It's a wetlands permit crossing.
It's the final permit to allow you to build it.
Right.
Yeah.
They look at, uh, structure, uh, soils, as I understand, and a bunch of other things.
Yeah.
Now, you're talking about the bridge test.
The Stark Bridge, yeah.
It was waiting for use for the grants, and it was supposed to be...
No, no, no grant, there's never any grant involved.
It's a wetlands crossing, wetlands permit.
So, did he have, did they have a wetland scientist onboard?
Yep.
Doing that?
Yep.
Does that answer that question?
Yeah, and the, uh, the amount of... Just wanna make sure it's...
Oh, believe me, many voters are concerned about that on the Red Road.
Right, they were missing.
Well, I, and I agree, I mean, it's, uh...
I've seen paperwork this year already.
It's a safety issue, at this point, it is, you know? Not to mention, not to mention, that money doesn't, you know, the prices do climb.
Oh, absolutely.
So, you know, that sixty-five thousand or whatever, fifty thousand.
I seem to recall in, uh, January, Jeff was hoping that'd be done this year.
We're having our road public hearing on May 4th.
Yeah, May 4th, yes.
Uh, be a good time to ask them about it again.
Yeah, there you go.
Hopefully have more information for us.
Yeah, I hope so.
Maybe something like from the state.
Yeah, instead of always hearing, yeah, it's coming along.
No, but there was actually, there was actually a recent, a request for more information.
Right.
And obviously Jeff, uh, provided that, and, uh, we just, again, so it's back in plain tennis, now it's in, at their court again, state. So, it's, you know, probably come back to us very soon.
Because again, if they're slow, and then they request more information, and next thing, you know, it comes to November and you're still not anywhere.
That puts it off a whole year.
You got it.
Okay, so noted, and so please, I invite you to that, uh...
Yeah, I'm, oh, I'm...
Okay. Um, Brian, anything else for the public?
Um, not really, uh, just, uh, regarding the, the situation regarding the person that can't hold office, that was done out in public, like, two, January.
Okay.
So, is it, I know, I appreciate you guys trying to keep it, uh, confidential sorts, but it's already been out there in public, so you're not really...
Uh, we, we don't have to keep repeating the name.
Exactly, but I'm just...
Out of respect for the gentleman, and I think is, uh, we have to give him a little dignity, and so that's what we're trying to do.
Oh, absolutely, I, I don't, I think, I applaud you for that, I just, letting you know that, you know, you're not, uh...
It was in public, yeah, absolutely.
It was in public, so it's not like you're bending any rules or breaking anything if you're, uh, but, so...
But I still have to, again, it's, it's a matter of dignity, and I do respect that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, sir?
Yes.
Anything for the group?
Oh, no, 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 no.
Okay.
He's just here, he's been a ruthless selectman that year.
That's all right, hey.
Could you sign your name on here?
Uh, yes, I did, and I didn't have a title, so I just put, "Friendly Neighborhoods by the Minutes."
Uh, yes, I did, and I didn't have a title, so I just put, "Your friendly neighborhood Spider-Mans."
Go ahead, anything else?
To kind of go on what Lee was talking about, the work first housing and the children. A lawsuit was just settled, and I think it was Manchester Concord, with a Somali student. He said he didn't get equal opportunity for public education, it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Well, if we have workforce housing, and the school can't afford interpreters, or whatever the case may be, or special needs and language, be a lot of liability there.
Oh, absolutely, the thing is, workforce housing, again, Dunbar embraced it around four to five years ago, and they created a mechanism to institute workforce housing, as I recall.
That's by law, we had to.
Right.
That was by law.
And so, we have the mechanism there, and this is the first time, and since that, we implemented the area, the whole of Dunbar is considered available for workforce housing. But this is the first time, this is, has basically hit Dunbar. And so, you can't deny, it's, you cannot deny anything people for moving in here.
Yeah.
And so, I agree with you, the thing is, the liability that would it create, I mean, we're not gonna put up road barriers against it, but there are things we can do, conservation.
Ahead of time, maybe, you know.
Yeah, there's all, things we can do to make sure, as we do it, we do it right.
It maybe behooves us, or someone, to get in touch with the organization themselves.
I have spoken to him on the phone, so.
Well, yeah, I know, but.
You want me to get him, invite him to a selectman's meeting?
Somebody should be here to discuss things.
Maybe they can just come to us and make, give us an idea what they wanna do.
Well, we know what they wanna do, but my, my point is that, to see what, where they might hold some liability. Because the question I posed to the representative at the last meeting, I, when I asked, is there any money in that fund to help offset the education, and he said, well, yeah, they do have some money they can put in there. So my point is, they realize they may be liable for something.
I wouldn't call it liable, but I would say they can anti-up something, they may be granted.
But they may be liable for something, if they're just shuddering him, shuttling him in here, see, so. Again, and he did say that they do help Manchester in some ways, so it behooves us to know in what ways we could get some.
Right.
Because if we just, if we just overlook everything, they don't mind turning and walking to the next group, and leaving us
hind, right.
barehanded, you know.
Okay.